Great, uh, so welcome everyone, it's five oh two at this moment, I'd like to call to order our committee of the whole meeting. For September seventeenth, twenty twenty four will begin with all who are able to please rise and salute the flag.
Hi.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, uh, the mayor will join us shortly, until then, I will chair our meeting, uh, could we please have a roll call of all present?
Sure, uh, Mrs. Bronson Rizzo.
Yeah.
Mr. Cagiano.
Here.
Mr. Kingston.
Here.
Uh, Ms. Milbury Ellis.
Present.
Uh, Ms. Montero.
Present.
Mr. Semella.
Present.
May I see?
Yeah, something else.
Okay, so first order of business is our consent challenge there? Do we have any questions on the minutes? Okay, uh, any questions on the warrants?
No. I just have clarification on one.
Had to do with. Curriculum. At the last page. One of those.
Pilot?
Yeah, the pilot, curriculum pilot designing. And more clarification on that, uh?
Which line item is that?
Last one.
Science from scientists.
Science.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's the, I don't know why it says pilot, but, uh, we've been working with them for a long time.
Yeah.
They're scientists who come in and give instruction in our elementary schools.
Okay.
Um, they're awesome, they are awesome.
They do, they do, when I said pilot, like I said, when I said pilot, same.
That's probably an original descriptor tied to that organization, right?
Yeah, probably just the way that the title one department submitted the requisition.
Thank you, anything else in the warrants? Okay, uh, any, we have no financial reports, no food service financials, uh, did we have, we had some late communications, I believe?
Yes, two around finances. So one was just to make sure the committee is on the same page. That, uh, the SR three grant has an end date of September thirtieth. We have been hustling to make sure that as much as possible of that grant is properly obligated. And invested in the best possible way for what our hopes had been for the grants. That has included the investment in the McKinley early childhood portion of the McKinley School Rehabilitation Project. So we just wanted to make sure that you're seeing that we're doing some work to make sure. That we maintain our commitment of the six point nine million dollars from this grant to the project. But because of some allowable expenses, we had to do some work. At the last hour to make sure that things were slotted properly, so wanted to let you know that that's happening. Tomorrow, they should be opening the price proposal and bid from the designer. And once we have that, uh, price proposal, if the committee that's working with that says yes to that proposal, we'll be able to work backwards on some of these numbers. But the allowableness is not going to change what we're able to invest overall in that project happening, so we wanted you to just see that. And to know that's happening in the next couple of weeks.
And to, to be a little bit more transparent with it, we did talk to the Department of Education. Uh, because these contracts are taking so much longer than we thought they would take. And we're running up on the timeline and, uh, Desi actually suggested, um, that, so what we had hoped to do was, uh, pay a portion of the OPM fees. A portion of the design fees and a portion of the construction fees that would bring us to the total of six point nine million dollars, which is what we planned all along, but we are. Just getting the design contracts together now, or I should say the city's just getting the design contracts together now, there's no hope that we will have a construction contract by September thirtieth, so we met with Desi and said, what do we do? And they're the ones who said, pay the, uh, fifty-three percent of the OPM, the fifty-three percent of the design contract. And then we're going to take the balance of that and actually put it toward transportation, because there's no supply rules on SR three. So we are going to put the balance of that on SR three and then the city, sorry, we're going to put the balance of that on transportation. And then the city will allocate the equal amount to a separate account that goes specifically to the McKinley. And in that way, we still get the six point nine million that we wanted to from SR three to go toward the Early Childhood Center. Um, and we don't lose any of our S F funding due to the time constraints of September thirtieth.
Perfect.
Yes.
Thank you for always being top of it.
Yeah, that was going to be my question, are we leaving anything on the table?
I do have a question.
The September three.
Um, is there any rest of the way?
No.
If the project falls through?
No, what, what we're doing is obligating these funds in time. We'll do a late liquidation of the payments over the next twelve to fourteen months, I think the window will be, but they want to know and see that we've done all the contractual work to obligate the funds.
I was just worried if the cost came in higher than they originally thought.
Well, the city will have to, so the city is paying the bulk of the charge for this whole project, um, I think right now it's estimated at twenty seven million.
But most of it's that fifteen million grant, right? They go after the.
Yeah, so there's a lot of it coming from that and then just our portion, uh, which is why we're making sure that our portion is at its full amount, so that the project doesn't get jeopardized. I don't think there's a question about the project being jeopardized, it's just the way time goes by before things.
My, my concern was that the cost increased, then the city, city, you know, couldn't, for whatever reason.
Yeah, I think they're on top of it.
Okay, I didn't mean that they're not, I, I don't mean that, I wasn't being negative, I just, gee, the, you know, the, the numbers came in a lot higher, we don't have that kind of money now, what? We've paid for all that free limb work, so to speak, and, and those.
The obligation for the project manager is done, we've committed to that, signed the contract.
Okay.
Tomorrow they open the envelope and see the proposal.
Yeah.
They were expecting somewhere in the four point two, but.
No, I'm thrilled, I think it's gonna be great, I just worry.
And then the second is, and, uh, sorry that this was a little late, but we just met with the Ways and Means Committee at the end of last.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, pulled together for your vote tonight at the second meeting. The appropriation of the carry forward funds flowing from last year to this year, so the. Three things just to be aware of as we do that is. We have eight million dollars of classroom teachers that we had been anticipating to be paid from previous years carried forward, so that plan is solid and in the numbers. We've worked diligently to build that reserve. And maintained it through this budget cycle, and now we'll be going to use those funds in the coming budget cycles, you see that transparently at the center of this. And then, on top of that, there was another eight hundred thousand and change to be mobilized for what the needs were this year. So the Ways and Means Committee worked on this, that this week, and you can see the handful of places that that funding will go. In the bottom third of this report, so in a, in a similar way. At the six o'clock meeting, we just have to take a moment to say, the committee is appropriating the carry forward according to the recommendations of the Ways and Means Committee. And then when the city closes its fiscal year, which should be soon, we'll be able to get this money where it is. And then start to give you updates on how the year is going, so typically we'll wait till October. But there's some, uh, positions here that we'd like to get moving on as quick as we can. And since we know what the bottom line will be, your vote tonight may not hit the books for a few weeks. But I'll be ready to go through that door, because you would have given the permission to do that tonight.
Ms. Bronson, so I just want to talk about the carry forward and this in no means. Means I am for or against any of the items. Um, one like student engagement meetings were not on the agenda for that meeting. Um, so no conversations have been had about it, um, where it wasn't listed on the agenda, it shouldn't be brought up right now. Um, and I also, the Lincoln School Playground is something I feel should go to plant and maintenance, so that the appropriate people. Can, um, do the homework and the legwork and then the recommendations to us. Um, I mean, they're both great, um, items to have. But then the obvious. One should go to the appropriate subcommittee. And one was not on the agenda and should be, I mean. Be on the next agenda. For conversations and maybe some ideas of, um, who might be able to come in and at the cost. Again, not saying I'm for or against, they're great ideas, but. You know, I look at like the Lincoln Playground, you're limited, it's a very small area and for years, like the PTAs always wanted to put some structures in there. But by law, you couldn't put certain structures because the limited space that they had and how, um, children can be hurt by it, so. I, I think I would like to listen to, um, not me particularly, but the plant and maintenance. Any professionals and if L wants to come in, that's fine, I built six playgrounds in the city, so I do value her opinion. Um, but we also need to look at, maybe there's grants within that we can utilize. That's how I feel. Stick it to me. Bugs, anyone?
Um, so. The thirty thousand dollars that I had requested was to, um, ensure that we had the funds, I know it was backwards, you're absolutely right, um, the Safety Committee is meeting tomorrow. We will have the first of many discussions about this. Um, but I think the idea was, at least I was under the impression that this money was going to be spent and I just wanted to ensure that some of it at least was allocated towards this purpose.
And again, I think it's great, I think.
No, I'm all about the process and I, and I agree with you, um, but that's the rationale behind it.
And I'll, and I'll just share that any, any carry forward funding that is not allocated, doesn't disappear, it sits there, you can decide at any point during the year. That you want to allocate a portion of that, um, you know, following your protocols or, or, or whatever, it's still there and then just. If we come to the end of the year and there's some that we haven't spent, it just goes into the carry forward for next year.
I think my thought was that it was going to be allocated, because everybody has ideas to make this money.
Yeah, I gotcha.
Right, and the vote that you're taking is just saying, have those funds available, there's been no encumbrances or commitments on the playground or on the student engagement meeting.
Right, exactly.
There's multiple steps before money actually gets encumbered, approved and expended. This is the budgeting process to say, we have to tell them where to put this money, so let's get it in these slots for now. And then as we take step forwards, if the committee says, hey, can we talk further about that? We are not demanded to spend these things in that direction, we're getting it set up to do that, should we keep going forward?
So Stacy, just so I understand you, you're saying it should have went to the Safety and, um, Safety Subcommittee first and then.
Right, it was not on the agenda, so open meeting law states anything that you want to speak about and vote on, which there was four votes.
I asked for it to be on the agenda, I didn't know it was not on the agenda.
But there was also four votes taken to, um, put that money into it, which was only supposed to be a recommendation to the school committee and not a vote for it. So I, you know what, I'm trying to cover.
The vote was to send it to the full committee though, wasn't it?
That's what I thought the vote was, yeah.
No.
Vote to move it forward to the full committee.
No, that's not what was said, and I had to watch it today, so if it was last week, I'd say, I don't know, I don't remember, but it was today. So.
I thought it was, I thought I said motion to carry forward to the full committee to be voted on, I recall that was my word.
But regardless, it wasn't on the agenda, I just don't want to get us in a place that I have seen before with, um. People filing open meeting law violations, and I don't want this committee to go where I have already seen. And this is the first time I'm hearing about this, and I know student engagement meeting sounds like it's on the agenda for tomorrow's subcommittee meeting, so first, can I just get a little bit more context? On what, what this is? What this request was for exactly, is it like for the school committee to host student?
The request was made, um, this is what we talked about during the Ways and Means Committee, so the request was made, um. Officer Singer and I were talking about ways in which we could, um, connect with the kids that are finding themselves in trouble. And, um, one of the ideas that we broached was the idea of having, um, you know, he had said. Um, his words, I'd like to have all the kids in a room and be able to have like a real talk with them and be able to have speakers come in and we kind of elaborated on, on that notion. It was a brief conversation, it was not, um, something that we were able to obviously work out all the details with. With the time that we had spent towards it, but I knew that the Ways and Means Committee was coming up and that they were allocating the carry forward fund, so I just wanted to. Get some of those funds reserved for that, um, in addition to those types of real talk, I'm calling it real talk, we call it whatever we want, but just so you guys know what I'm talking about.
Okay, that's, okay.
So, yeah, so in addition to that, the funds would also allow the school committee, if we wanted to host, um, maybe a parent forum or a, a students only forum where those members of. Of the public can come to us directly and kind of have a, a one-on-one chat with us, um, we would have the funds to pay. Um, the custodial staff and, and for refreshments or whatever it is that we might need in order to do that.
And we had talked a little bit too about having maybe a guest speaker or two.
Yeah, a guest speaker, exactly.
And we talked a little bit about how the F D typically to come in and do a seminar like that, depending on if it's a couple hours or a full day, could be like three to five thousand dollars. So, uh, I think that's what we were talking about when coming to the thirty, like what's a, what would be a right number to kind of encapsulate all of those ideas while we, while they get flushed out. And I think the idea was that when we have the community forum on the twenty-fourth, that students and parents would be able to contribute to what are the right ideas, who are the right speakers to come in and, um.
And so. Usually we vote on this in October, right, so we would still have a month to vote on it. If, if it didn't happen tonight, it's right. We could vote on it next month if.
Sure, we could, you could vote on this in October, no problem, the reason that we put it before.
Hold on, let me clarify. Um, we are going to vote on the carry forward tonight, so we can move forward, but any unspent carry forward could still be voted on October, November, December, January, whenever.
The money is allocated.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
The timing is more around, for example, if the committee does not take the Ways and Means Committee's recommendation and vote tonight. Then you can't start moving on the nurse that we need, because the money's not been committed.
So if it was recommended by the committee, maybe I'm just, yeah, maybe you're. No, I'm just saying, first, I, with the carry forward, I personally would like to see each item. Voted to, at the next meeting, each item and not taken up as a whole pack, um.
That's doable, yeah.
I think that's fine, okay, so we'll know that. And. So what we're saying is any money that is discussed and talked about and voted on at the next meeting is not written in stone for that particular thing. Because I'm going to go on there and I'm going to save that video.
Even if we voted yes?
Because it's allocated, it's not, then they could come to official authorization to use it once there's a plan and everything.
Sorry, I got distracted for a minute, say again?
Am I following that right? That, I, what I heard Matt and Stacy and Ms. Bronson Rizzo explain is that this is the allocation, but it's not set in stone and so there's an actual project and then it comes to authorizations. But I think it is set in stone, I'm, I'm going to, I love you Matt, but it is, we're voting on these items tonight to go into play. It's not to just sit back and wait. Now you lost me, because right before that you said. Uh, just because we do it, it's not set in stone, no. Well, no, I was going by what Matt had said, and I'm saying if that's what everyone's agreeing to. And it's not set in stone, I'm taking that recording and reminding people later on down the road. That's, that's what they agreed to.
Yeah, I think what we meant is we're dealing with budgeting here, so the committee is saying, we want to do this, for example. Flooring and repair of the Lincoln School Playground, and we're committing sixty-five thousand to it.
Mm-hmm.
Then work is done on, what are we spending that sixty-five thousand dollars on, who are we contracting with?
Right.
Um, is it fifty-eight that we spent to we? But this is a commitment, we wouldn't then use that money instead for.
Something else.
But how the thirty thousand dollars for student engagement? We don't have to settle on that now, we have to have a general sense.
So my next question is. If, uh, this was the Ways and Means recommendation for each line item here. I'm failing to see the gap, because I could see how it could be a concern if there was a vote and a recommendation and now there's a line item here that wasn't talked about and wasn't included in that vote. There I would see a concern, so maybe I'm just not understanding, where is the gap between if this was a full vote and recommendation by the committee? The issue with it being on here. May, could you explain a little bit more, like maybe I'm just missing that?
I, I think I missed what you just said, but. My understanding of, of the issue Stacy raised was that procedurally. This issue should have been discussed first in the Safety Subcommittee and then should have been, um, referred to Ways and Means for the, for the, for the funding.
Okay, so since this was, oh, go ahead, Chuck.
But does it?
But I don't.
But does it have to be, I guess is my question.
I don't know, everything has to.
It wasn't on the agenda, but so first of all, if it's not on the agenda, it didn't happen.
No, I sent it to be on the agenda, so. It should have been on the agenda.
Okay.
I requested.
Right now, we're just voting on.
I don't remember what the agenda is.
This money put in the budget and it will be under separate line items, correct?
Right, and again.
I thought I saw it on.
We can vote any way that you want.
You sure?
We probably don't want to set a practice. We have a hundred and fifty-two million dollar budget, we probably don't want you as a committee saying yes or no to thirty thousand dollars at a time.
Right.
So the idea is. The Ways and Means Committee is putting this before the whole committee tonight. To say, hey, we did our work, we had our hour-long conversation, here's the best use of carry forward. In line with the superintendent's collaboration and vision, so we're going to vote this in one shot. And then we'll get busy to spend it.
And then we can go forward and make a motion, uh, to use the money for that, has to go in front of the committee as a whole, so right now we're just voting on, it's going into the budget, period.
Yeah, it's being allocated.
It's being allocated, doesn't mean it's going to be used till we get voted on as a committee as a whole.
Right, okay.
Which, which.
Which that's what they're asking for.
Which that's what we're going to do.
Right.
Typically, we'll wait till October, there's no rush, it's getting, but there's a few positions in here that we would like to not have to wait a whole night.
Just do the whole thing.
I, I suppose, it reflects back to the question. Does the. Um, I don't know what to call it, does the suggestion wish, whatever the word we want to use for like the playground, for instance? Is it required, is it a rule, reg, whatever word you want to use, that it has to go to subcommittee?
Well, I mean, you want to treat, treat each subcommittee, right, it was on the agenda, but let me start by saying. With the agenda, whatever you're putting down, the public needs to have a clear view of what you're going to be speaking about. Just to put down Lincoln School Project Playground doesn't mean anything to the average person.
Well, it says carry forward and I didn't do that.
Well, no one knows what a carry forward is either, so it needs to be more detailed when it comes to the agenda. I'm not saying it's her fault, I'm not saying it's their fault, it's our fault as chair of our subcommittees that we're not. Saying what we're going to be discussing, as far as the Lincoln School Project goes. Yeah, other respect for each one's subcommittee, I mean. Um.
But the Ways and Means Committee discussed it. And it's recommending that we vote collectively, so we're splitting hairs, I'm, I'm, I'm missing something.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think the vote, because we had a difference in opinion on the vote, it was, the, the vote was to submit it to the full committee for their vote.
Correct.
Your vote doesn't.
I agree that one hundred percent, yeah, and if I misspoke at the subcommittee meeting, I apologize, I know, I know it had to go another vote, obviously, that's the purpose of this. But I did put it on the agenda and I didn't, I, I thought, I'd be honest, I put it on the agenda. Um, which I did, and I also, it went before Ways and Means, which I thought that's the place it should go, I understand maybe it should have gone somewhere else, but it didn't. And I don't know, if, if there's no rule or reg, I don't know why it can't be voted tonight, if it gets voted down, it's fine.
And I do bring this up time and time again with you. We need to respect each other's subcommittee and what their purpose is, then we don't need the subcommittee for anything. John Kingston wants to spend money on this, this and that, then why have a go to a subcommittee to do the homework on it?
It did go to the subcommittee, what's a Ways and Mean, and the homework was done on it.
No, it didn't plant a maintenance, I'm talking about, but that one. So I see two things here, I think if a member has a request to vote line by line, we've done that before and I'm perfectly okay with that, I think. I'm, I would like to vote line by line to respect Bush's, because that has been passed practice, so that's one, so that's on that part. On the part of these two items, I'd like to hear from the people who brought them, what, what you're thinking, we could wait until October for two of these specific ones. I just, I mean, I don't know who put up the Lincoln one, but I'd like to hear from each.
Well, how come mine isn't on the agenda? I know, was it not on the agenda?
It's not.
I can remember seeing it.
I don't think it, I don't think it came out, I don't recall it being before the, I don't recall.
I remember knowing it, Ayesha, because I, I don't know if you emailed or somebody else did, but I remember seeing it, because the term that you used, um, Real Talk.
Real Talk.
I Googled it to see, I thought that was a company, and I Googled Real Talk, so I know that I saw it.
I thought it was a company too.
Yeah, yeah, that's tomorrow's subcommittee meeting, but I.
Okay, maybe that's where I saw it.
I guess I can see it, I, I mean, no, I apologize, it was an oversight of my part.
So, if the, if the McKin, if the, um, Lincoln School discussed at the regular meeting, we just recommend to go to plant and maintenance. And the money's still not earmarked though.
But we could vote on that, we could earmark it in October, like we usually do.
Thoroughly discussed.
Yeah, and I, I would also, just to add to the conversation, like, I know it didn't specifically say, um, I forget, um, Real Talk. On, on the agenda, but the true conversation, the true topic of the agenda was how to spend the carry forward money.
Again, it's not clear to the public or to any one of us, like, should I just assume and carry forward, other things were going to come up? I didn't, I don't even agree with some of them. Never mind imagining something else.
Uh, I feel like we had talked a little bit about it before, uh, in terms of the, the, the items that I had put together and we talked about the nurse position, um.
Yeah, and I feel like this is. We knew that there was going to be some, yeah, funds, and this was on the heels of the, the.
Right, our original carry forward. So.
I, I could, I'd like at the reg, at the regular meeting, we'll vote them up or down, um, and if someone doesn't want to vote yes, they can, I, I think that's the, I mean, to me, that's the fairest way.
But does my, um, topic get bumped because it wasn't on the, on the agenda?
If you had requested it to be put on the agenda, I think that's a separate conversation you can have with the chair of that committee, in case it was missed. I think at this point.
Well, not only was it on the agenda, but it was thoroughly discussed during the Ways and Means Committee meeting, I mean, we spent.
I, I, I put, I assumed it was part of the carry forward discussion, so that's, that's on me.
I do.
That's on me, I'll, I'll take, you know.
Would you be okay voting with it in October after, especially the subcommittee tomorrow, where you'll explain more to that subcommittee, what that idea looks like? If you people feel like we need to do that, then that's fine.
But the money will always be allocated anyway.
Right, the money's there.
The money's there anyway, so it's just a formality, we'll do that.
So that'd be the same thing with the Lincoln School then?
Yes, Mr. Semella.
Well, no, the, the thirty thousand wasn't on the agenda, my error, I guess.
Well, no, we can, but the recommendation from, from the subcommittee can state X, Y and Z. Refer it to plant maintenance, discuss it, and in October, it'll be there.
Mm-hmm.
It, it's just for clarity, from what I'm hearing, is that correct?
Yeah, I guess the issue is that like I, and it's not just my, um, item, and the issue I'm having right now is that like I. Take the time out in order to attend as many meetings as I can, and when we've spent considerable time talking about these issues, it's just really frustrating. Um, and I understand the process and the purpose of having a, a correct process, but it's really frustrating to have to go back to another meeting and allocate more time. That, that honestly I'm pressed and that I don't have to just have the same exact, to say, have the same exact conversation, you know, but that meeting is not exclusive to this issue. And that I don't have to just have the same exact to say have the same exact conversation, you know, but that meeting is not exclusive to this issue.
But it is on the.
It's on the agenda.
That is what I was thinking of. I just found the email.
It is on the agenda, but the point was to have it a part of the carry forward money that was gonna be voted on voted on tonight.
And and one thing I would say in defense of that, and I know this might not follow protocol, but. Where we are in a space where. The community and the parents and the students and the staff are looking for us to do more of this work. I don't wanna say to people, well, we I can't do anything until October seventeenth or fifteenth or whatever the date of the meeting is. Until it get vote gets voted then, do you know what I mean?
There's there's two things we can do then. At the six P M. Meeting, someone could put in a motion to suspend the subcommittee structure. For this specific item. And then people vote for that, then we could vote on it now without having to go through the subcommittee process. That's another avenue. We can also see and then if they get suspended for this specific item for urgency, cuz they're operating procedures, do you say that we can suspend certain structures? If there is an urgency and it would need a majority vote, then we could vote on it now. To this continue talking about it tomorrow and then at the community forum. So that's another avenue that I could recommend you propose as the proponent of that item.
Okay. And then, no, no offense, but I don't think the Lincoln is a critically important.
I wanted to say, what's the urgency?
In the same way, right?
Yeah.
Uh but um. You know, so if protocol needs to happen there, that would be different, I think, than the protocol for. Trying to have this money to help support the kids.
And the urgency Bronson Rizzo I was referring to wasn't about the playground. It was about. How the student engagement meetings are something that it looks like. Our district is trying to implement to help with the urgent issue in our schools.
And I thought we already discussed that that would still be allocated, that more conversation would be had had on it, like who might the speakers be like? Years back, we used to have Chris Heron come and talk about drugs. And I mean. Strong speakers, not a speaker just to come in and talk about disruption. People that have been there in their shoes.
But it's only allocated if we vote on it. Tonight, otherwise, it's gonna be allocated in October, which you know what is whatever you guys wanna do, I'm all about the protocol. I understand Stacy's concerns and technically she's absolutely right. Um but. You're right as well as far as there's an exception as to how we can go about it.
Let's so I heard we shouldn't vote on this item. Because it wasn't on the agenda. So I'm just providing the whole committee with different procedural options that we can all take as a body at six P M. If there's urgency, which I believe there is, people can suspend to vote on it, but it won't be allocated. As it's been explained unless we vote on it. So those are the options that folks can now decide if you wanna make different motions at the six P M. To have it or not have it and we'll vote on each thing line by line by line.
Sounds good.
Only recommend something. I don't know any subcommittees that I've been on to say that we took a vote.
Yeah, you recommend.
Okay, so just to you have the recommendation was and then to go forward, yeah, okay.
Right, when when we're saying vote line by line. The Ways and Means Committee has said to the bigger committee, we did our work. Or four of us were there and we have to tell. The city auditor where to put this eighteen million dollars and the sooner the better for our superintendent trying to get her work done in this. So these are our recommendations. That goes to vote at six o'clock. Any of the six of you can say. I don't wanna put thirty thousand dollars toward that. Or yes or no.
Yeah.
But the committee as a whole has to give me the permission to allocate it.
As a whole of what you. And. A- as opposed to I I don't I don't give them. Line by line, yeses or nos, I have to give them the bottom line to that so that we can hope with it.
Yeah, and you'll do that. I think this is like. Whenever we have like two things in a motion and one person may say, can I vote on both separately? So you'll still do your part as a whole. For the sake of folks' motions and votes records will separate it for us. Yes, so.
Which brings me to um coordinator of operations and data. Would this position be considered more data driven in the work? Is that what we're looking at?
Where is that?
The the three operation.
Oh administrator.
So there's three assistant principals and a principal for each six to seven hundred do six. Hundred dollars, seven hundred students. Is that what we're talking about? So if we're talking data driven, why wouldn't we have an assistant to? Jamie is the data person. Why wouldn't we have an assistant to work on these items and? I I look at we're doing contracts right now and people want more money, people want cost of living, people want everything. And. To. These are large items. These are large positions.
Yeah.
I know it makes a daily. Or we'd like to think it would make the day to day work easier.
It's not even easier. It's that the amount of work. That's now required really for the testing piece is the big piece with the number of kids that are having access testing and then MCAS. Um and really being able to use that data to drive the instruction is where we're struggling. And then on top of that, the work around any Title Nine or harassment or bullying. Charges that we're now required to do by the state, which is great. It's a great process, but it's very labor intensive. And one issue could take a an assistant principal or a principal. Out of their role for three or four days just to in investigate. One situation. And then if it's the middle of the testing season, which happens now basically virtually all year long. The principal is the one who right now is spending all of their time scheduling the rooms, scheduling which kids have accommodations, what the accommodations require. It's just become so burdensome that the principals and the assistant principals can't get into the classrooms to do the work around rigor. And um making sure that their presence helps kids understand what the expectations are for behavior. And so it becomes a vicious cycle because they're not getting into the classrooms. Kids are acting up more and getting sent out and then all they're doing is discipline. And there's no one who's spending the time to really um get dig into the data, share it with teachers. And so this person would almost be. Uh mostly focused on the data. Looking at the kids attendance, who's chronically absent, trying to end that before it gets to chronic absenteeism. Connecting with the families, using the family, working with the family liaison to connect with the families and get kids in. And then doing the testing and the data analysis, but also supporting the principals, the assistant principals. With the discipline and the um Title Nine re- regulations.
So there's an overlapping.
There is overlapping, yeah. And this person will be very busy at certain times of year just doing the testing. And that's what their focus will be. But when they're not testing, that's when they'll be supporting the other staff and Richie.
And I kinda had the same thought when I I looked at it and how I describe it is. They do use data in all facets of what they're doing, but every data point they're gonna be acting on. So if you think about accommodations across a school, they have to determine. Whose I E P has accommodations for small group testing, who has one on one, they have to be able to then schedule that based on the data. Same thing with discipline. They're gonna be logging, oh, well, every sixth period, uh student A seems to be getting into trouble. I'm gonna have the family in and say what's going on in that period. You know what I mean? So. They are using data all day long, but it's really the subsequent action from the data. That I think right now our middle school staff just can't get to. They don't have the bandwidth.
Where does this person fit in the hierarchy?
Equal to an assistant principal.
Equal to an assistant principal.
Pardon me, what?
Equal to an assistant principal, correct?
So it'd be like a, you know how we have some assistant principals, just like, for example, we have superintendents with different titles. So this would be like an assistant principal. For data and.
Answering to the principal, not to other assistants.
Correct.
Other question?
I ju- you know, I just feel like. Everyone is overburdened right now. In all facets of our education system. I don't know. I do. I have a hard time when people are out there asking for cost of living or they're asking for raises and stuff. It's a lot of money.
Cost of living raises and.
Also want to acknowledge we. Not that you're talking about negotiations, but that we're talking about salaries for non administrators. That is a separate conversation in a separate space. Not for now, but appreciate folks sharing their thoughts. I want to acknowledge the mayor is here. Mayor, we have no enrollment updates. Um we are now at personnel items. If folks have questions or thoughts, I'll pass it back to you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Just left some negotiations as well. Fun. Every contract for the entire city is up in one year. Awesome. Yeah, I know, we should. Okay, so uh you you already want of new hires or?
Yeah, any questions or comments there?
Okay, you got it.
I think. Thank you, Matt. So thanks, Matt.
Dr. Kelly, I guess that was on you and Mr. Gucci um. She was asking about the new hires, the hundred new hires. How they doing? They doing good?
So far, so good. Uh we do still have ten positions that we're trying to to fill, teaching positions. Um five of them are special education. Actually, really, you could say seven are special education cuz but to us to be pathologists. Um and then we've got a couple of other positions that we have. Budgeted for that we wanna fill, but we're not as desperate to fill those. We can function. Uh without them, but we're still gonna push ahead and try to fill those. Uh that includes one more school psychologist position. Other than that, we're fully staffed with our school psychologists. Which is a great improvement over where we've been the last couple of years. Um we've got an E L. English learner. Language acquisition coach, position open. Again, we wanna fill that. We're not desperate to fill that. I mean, I I don't know how to say this appropriately. We can function without the position, but we really wanna fill it. Um so all together with including everything, um we have a total of sixteen positions that we're trying to fill for teachers. Um and then prepare professionals. Um we have one, two, three, eight. Part time positions left open to fill. Uh we have one full time position open from a recent resignation, but we feel like that one's gonna fill very quickly. So we're in good shape, much better than we were at this time last year, so. Um still working at it. The high school made a recommendation for one of their open positions today, so. If that goes through, we can decrease that number that I gave you by one. Um and everybody is just continuing to work on it.
The um hundred, you said that we're hired the last time we met. This is twenty seven more. So you you replace him a hundred and twenty seven.
It's seventeen. This is seventeen more. It's a total of seventeen.
Miscounted by Tim, sorry.
That's okay. Um. A handful of them are new positions and the rest are uh replacements, retirements, resignations, et cetera.
What's the assistant at the high school?
The new ones that.
Which one and which one are you looking at?
New hire, assistant principal in their high school.
Oh, Carla is replacing um somebody who left. Pierina, Margarito, Santa.
Is is that a new position or she replaced an assistant who left?
She's replacing an assistant who left.
Okay, so at the high school now we have a principal, deputy principal. Seven assistants. Six.
Six.
See, that that could be part of your problem in the morning coming in. Um you know, not to sound sexist, you've got one male and six females.
Well, good guy.
You know, I mean, somebody got hurt, got pushed and everything else. It 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 just.
Did you ever see me deal with a fight? Freddie, I will take you out. I could take you down in a minute.
And there's more than one male on our team, I will say as well.
It is not as balanced as the middle schools are generally. There's five women and two males to Mr. Sanella's point, so there.
Yeah.
There is a, yeah.
No doubt, yeah.
I mean, I can talk ancient history when you had principal at the high school and one assistant. Now, I mean. You're creating four more positions.
I could see a lawsuit coming.
It's it's everything. It's just everything. Everything's. Administration, administration. Teachers are looking for support as as mentioned, salaries. I I I don't see it coming to a root of anything. It just it's just gonna perpetuate itself.
I mean, I I get what Freddie's saying as far as being top heavy, you know, any type of organization that runs, you can run into problems when that's the case. But we also have sixteen hundred students, so if we're.
Sixteen hundred.
Over two thousand and seventy.
Two thousand.
Okay, yeah. Almost twenty two hundred.
Oh, twenty two hundred. I guess it's all relative, right?
But I'm also gonna say that this district is not top heavy. And if you compare us to other districts of. Uh equal or even lesser size, they have five far more administrators than we have.
Well, you know, I realize times change and and and. Good, better and different. Uh and I'll use myself as an example. Wayland School K through eight. Principal and assistant principal. Eight hundred and five kids, but times change. Things have to be. Programmed different things, everything else, but it seems that. Every time something comes up, it's administrative. Uh these new three positions, the people who are doing the job now knew what they were doing when they took the job. You saw fit to. Take some of their duties, so now instead of a principal and two assistants, it's a principal and three assistants. It just goes on and on and on.
But also too, the classrooms are a lot smaller than what we were when we were in school too. It's like half the size.
Well, and the demands, right? There's a lot of red tape and a lot of demands that the state puts on.
But I mean, we're talking about having having nurses who work elsewhere because they can go up to five hundred dollars a day. Yet we're putting in three or four hundred thousand dollars into a new administrative position and. Serving X amount of students where nurses are serving thousands of them. It it just seems everything is imbalanced and that's my opinion.
So I I do wanna point out that in the last couple of years since S O A came on into place, we've added over a hundred teaching positions. That's so we now have over eight hundred teachers in this district. I don't know how many there were when when at the times that you're talking about. I know it was far fewer. Every single one of those teachers needs to be evaluated seven to ten times a year. That didn't used to exist. MCAS didn't used to exist. The Title Nine laws didn't used to exist. The number of. The number of I E Ps didn't used to exist. The number of English learners didn't exist. All of the work that we have to do for all of these kids, it's a very different environment now than it used to be. And I think that our. Administrators, our principals especially. Um are in a position where they can't do their jobs. They can't get to the curriculum, the instruction. And and making sure what's happening in classrooms is the right thing because they're so bought down with all of the other. And it has definitely helped having two assistant principals instead of one cuz there was a time when we only had one assistant principal at each of the middle schools. Um but the need has just increased. That significantly and we have to make it so that their jobs are doable. People don't want principal jobs anymore because they're so. Difficult and they deal with so much in their in their day to day. Um we need to find a way to make it so that their job is doable and they're not ready to quit after three or four years in each session.
Well, and they're effective.
Yeah, and that they can be effective.
But Dr. Kelly, can I interrupt?
Sure.
Could I talk to you for just a minute? I'm so sorry.
But you're in charge.
Okay, can I just say though, and I I get where people outside look at administrative getting larger and I I. In some ways I do feel it because. Like I said, educators play such adjusted field. And are expected to do more in the classroom and deal with more in the classroom with um the social. Issues. Um but ten years ago is when we went from one assistant principal. And we decided to add to help the principal and the assistant principal. Then it was a few years after that we needed a second assistant principal because. It was there was just too many difficulties. Now, such as the operator one, we did family liaisons to help out and they were working great. But now even the family liaisons need help and we're adding another administration. I I think that's where people have a hard time. Um we can sit here and we can say, yes, today's world, it's changed. We need all that. But I think it's hard for people on the outside to really take this all in and. See the need for it.
Well, I think anyone on the outside who has questions should come and shadow our school and all the work that our entire school district does to run and serve all of our students. So I know our administrators and our school committee members are always open to answer those questions. So if folks don't understand. They can become an educator and join us or they can shadow our school or come to a forum and hear the millions of things all. The millions of things all our educators at all levels have to do each and every day, every second to serve our students.
Yeah, I'm, Jack one, I, Ms. Montero, so I I feel the same way, you know, sometimes from the outside looking in. Even years ago, you know, you you felt a little bit of it, you you kinda had these same feelings, but when the more and more you spend time in this building or in in any of our schools. You realize the amount of work, and this goes from the top to the bottom, everyone left and right. Um, it's it's wild, and uh, it's it's something that I don't know how you do it, and I say this all the time, I know that. Um, you know, sometimes a- administration can be looked at as as the the tough people uh making the tough decisions, but. The amount of work that's done and the hours that are put in, there's not a type, both 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 these two here and of course the rest of the team. When I call it six o'clock at night, they're still here, and not every night, but they're and if they're not here, they're still in involved. Uh, this these incidents that happened last week or two weeks ago, you know, that had consumed an entire, just you know, because I know you handle a lot of the discipline, um, Mr. Gucci. And that consumed at least two weeks of your work, and it's still consuming it, yeah, right now.
Yeah.
And so that that's not something that you could just pass off to uh someone that, you know, just kinda came on, came on, so. I appreciate what you do, and I know it's not easy because not everyone appreciates it, and there's, you know, the state of Massachusetts, it's it's very easy to. Point at school districts and 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 use use political, um, you know, kind of.
Soundbites.
Soundbites to 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 vilify it. The state of Massachusetts has the best educational system in the country. What, definitely in the top, top, okay, I I will, I will say it's the best, but you know, it's definitely in the very, very high tops.
And the city of Riviera is one of the highest performing urban school districts in the state.
Yeah.
I get all this out, I got calls from. Vice chairs from other districts who were just like, how do we, how do we match our MCAS force, like how do we, you know, match you all?
And sometimes it's hard to appreciate it when you're inside of it, it's just like everything else, you don't always appreciate. The Bill Belichick's until the Bill Belichick's are no longer there and you're not, you know, you're four and four and twelve.
Can I just address what Mrs. Monterosa had said about? Monte.
Monterosa.
Okay, so. Just that, you know, to say people need to come in and see and ask questions, it's so easy to say that. I was a parent in this district for twelve years that participated in everything. I was also in the nurse's office for twenty years, but until you sit in these roles. And see actually the workings, you do not know, so. To become an educator doesn't necessarily mean you know exactly what's going on in their roles. Um, I wish our educators could understand what they're doing, but. They can only see what they're dealing with at that time point.
And they have a lot of work too.
And they have a lot of work.
Thank, thank you to all of them. Mr. Kingston.
When, when you talked to us at the Ways and Means Subcommittee, you hit, you hit something, a point that was in my head. My dad retired about thirty years ago from being an elementary principal in this district for over thirty years. And his biggest complaint in his last few years was how much time he had to spend in the office and how little time he could spend with the kids, and if he knew my dad. He wanted to spend as much time as he could with the kids.
And it changes everything.
Bothered him a lot, he said, I'm tied to the blank blank computer and I can't get out of the office and I don't like my job anymore. And I, you know, I obviously lived in my house in my own life, and I never heard my dad say that those last few years. So when you said that about principals not being able to get out of the office or the assistants tied up doing scheduling, it really hit me. And you, and with all due respect, you did a much better, you know, you did a great job of of. I won't say selling it, because I'm not being sold, you did a great job of explaining the role. Um, that didn't happen tonight unfortunately, but I I, that's why I'm saying it now, I remember my dad telling me that, no, and thirty years ago is not today. It isn't, but for my dad to tell me that and for me to remember it thirty years, and I'm sitting in that meeting. In the in the school committee room and you said that, and I'm like, wow, that's what my dad said, and it just really hit me, because I do agree about creating more spots. But I do know how important it is to have those administrators in the hallways, especially at the middle schools, because hopefully if we can get the kids, I'll say squared away, I don't know what word to use. Get them out of, get them out there, get them in, not in their office, so that you see them, and I think if we can help get the middle school. Um, not to say it's not good, if we can improve, I'll say, I don't wanna use the wrong words, improve the middle school, or make it a little better, or have more engagement.
Learn how to do school.
Yes, so that when they when they reach the school, we won't, you know, no offense, we won't be on the news every week. Because, um, and I I think, you know, if someone's locked in their office, they don't know what's going on.
Yeah.
So if it if this position allows those people to get out. Um, and also the other thing too, and you pointed out the meeting and you didn't say it tonight, we might have an assistant principal now that loves data. And he's gonna say, he or she, I want that job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that might help that person stay in the district, that might help that person's professional growth or personal growth, whatever words you wanna use. And then we hire another person that's gonna be the more forward facing, because maybe they wanna do that. Because during the Ways and Means Committee, I had said to you about it being a lesser position, because it wasn't so forward facing, maybe we should do a different tier. But you came back to me and said, what if one of our current assistants wanted that job, and I agreed with you, and no offense, that doesn't happen that often. And you you made a great point, so that didn't happen tonight, because I thought about it, let's save a few bucks, let's have a second tier. So this person wouldn't be an assistant principal, be one step below, because they're not doing the same thing, but you explained how that might hurt someone, I agreed with you. And that's why, I think we need to have our admins in the hallways, not in the, not in the, for the most part, in the hallways, in the hallways and the pastings forever. I'm sorry, I know we're all the time, but I had to say that because tonight, didn't, I didn't get the same vibe from you, in no offense, I didn't get the same vibe from you of why you thought it was important tonight. As I did in that meeting, you did a great job in the meeting, and I meant that sincerely.
We have about two minutes, and I just wanted to know, if we wanted to run down a few more before we got into the regular.
Just acknowledge, um, Mr. Kingston and the work that his father had done. And the small things that make it work so much easier by not being in the office, by not being on the computer. The man would be out front doing traffic and having kids come into school and could grab the problem. Issues right on the sidewalk, also grab the parents that might not come in for those meetings. And always had those discussions first thing in the morning, the end of the day. Would have his arm around the kid and say, I think we need to have a chalk buddy, and I've never seen a more welcoming. I mean, don't get me wrong, I love what who we have now, and everyone has a different personality, but it was my, the best style that. An administrator could have, um, so, you know what? I'm gonna say George was the best person I ever worked with, and I will never forget him, that's for sure.
Um, so the ne- the next item, the uh American Income Life Insurance, I can table that till next month, it's not.
Okay, and then I know we have uh promoting uh acceptance of donations and gifts real real briefly. Uh, we did uh recognize and uh acknowledged an unbelievable accomplishment by. A former Rebea High graduate and teacher, Anna D'Amenzio, who received uh the Biology, uh Mass Bio and Edic Champions Award. Here, we had a celebration here last week, uh, and she also received five thousand dollars. Uh, that she can use towards her um needs, her classroom needs, her personal needs that are involved in her as you, uh, her.
I encouraged a spa visit.
You did, you 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 encouraged some um self-care, which is always good. And then promoting a safe and healthy learning environment grants award, which is fifty thousand dollars, I don't think anyone's gonna turn that away.
Do you know what that's for? That's uh fifty thousand dollars for teams of teachers to. Uh, work on developing out the curriculum that goes along with the new standards for health and P E. Uh, the twenty, Desi put out new standards in twenty twenty-three, and the teachers are gonna work together to um build out that curriculum.
Great.
Thank you, I'm motion to adjourn.